You're listening to Community Forum on KCCC 930 AM. Sponsored by Eddie County, honoring God, country, and family. Thriving with industry since 1889.
My name is Ed DeRota and I co-host this evening is Johnny Chandler. On behalf of the board member for the Charlesbad Municipal College, New Mexico College, and Rocket Videos, we welcome you to be the candidate for the candidate. Tonight, you will hear directly from our candidates to vote before the election. By the way, voting in absentee by mail has been today, October 21st, at the county get's office. If you have not yet registered to vote, you can do so on election day, which is Tuesday, November 4th. Now, I will go ahead and turn it over to Johnny Chandler.
I agree with that. Who does like Johnny Chandler on the record for his partnerships here at Southeast Municipal College? I want to thank Southeast Municipal College for hosting this event, called by local board members, called that, you as well, putting on this event. I'm just going to go ahead and go over the rules briefly. All the future rules and parameters set by all candidates and obvious members for the 2025 candidate forum. The debate order will be determined by a card draw, base being first, second being the lowest. We'll start back here. Any being managed or trying to stand out of their damn being here or not allowed Southeast Municipal College during this debate. In the gym, thank you very much. They are allowed in the lobby. The audience is expected back to a professional manner. Unprofessional, obscene language, or thought in the audience, members are welcome from the forum. We go through security here, make that easy for us. No candidates allowed to have assistance distributed in the district during the forum meeting materials. If you know the material, it's later than candidates. No candidates allowed to have a shallow, empty mind, no candidates allowed to use electronic devices, no candidates shall interact with or render a lot of time to speak. Questions can be put to the general public, all of those will be seen and moderated. No outside moderators are allowed to see or know the questions ahead of time. No candidate to see any of the questions that are put together. No individuals are allowed, the moderators will be respectfully asked, candidates stop in or reliser up to the rule and ask the question or see the question and officially ask candidates to see if that continues. Also let's you guys know all of these rules that we put together is based off of the women voters website. They have been doing great, but can't get forum guys or anybody who followed them on polling talks. So that is the rules of the format that we were following. Nobody really does better than that. So to start, I would like to invite Nancy McMillan and Katie Gomez up here, please, so we can do our card draw. This is for Carl Lemon, Municipal District 1. All right, Mr. McMillan has three parts and Mrs. Gomez has two parts. So good to go. You'll start between those two candidates. Come on, please take a seat, all at the end, please. Next, Tiffany Shirley and Henry Castaneda, please. Interview the two of the two of the two of the five of us. Let me go over to those two. The way that we're getting started is we're going to let everyone give a two minute kind of introduction about who they are, why they're on the front row office, and what they think they do to help the children in our community. Yeah, are you ready? Want to take another minute? We're gonna go. You start two minutes on the clock, please.
My name is Nancy McMillan. I am a current forward member for District 1. I'm a lifelong resident of Carlsbad, graduated in 2007. Contained my nursing degree here at the N2 Carlsbad and then bachelor's from N2 Fox Cruses. I worked at the hospital, hospice, and then I've been teaching in loving and then on teaching online classes for N2 Carlsbad. Like I said, I've spent the last three and a half years on the school board. I've worked really hard to maintain transparency, communication, and being an open line for parents and staff to communicate with the district. I have two children. I have been married for 14 years and I'm looking forward to serving for my four years.
Thank you very much. Go on.
First thing I'd like to say is I'm not a politician, so forgive me. I wanted to make sure I didn't follow all over my own words, which is another reason that I feel like I would be a candidate for this position. But my name is Katie Gomez. I'm a proud mom of four children. I'm a wife to a law enforcement officer and I am the owner and finance director of the Sunny Side Academy. I'm the president of the Ocatillo Elementary PTA. I serve as the vice president of the finance, vice president of finance for the New Mexico PTA State Board. My passions for service began when I joined the Chamber of Commerce ambassadors in 2018. I discovered how much I loved Carlsbad, how much I really wanted to make a difference in this community. Since then, I've focused on building connections between families, schools, and local organizations to strengthen the foundation for our children. I'm running because I believe our district needs leadership that listens, communicates openly, and makes decisions with transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castaneda.
Good evening. I'm Henry Castaneda. My wife is Kathy Castaneda, retired educator, along with many family and friends that are at this point in here that have been retired from the education department. I've a lifelong resident of Carlsbad, retired from the judiciary. I have continued to assist the community in different boards. Currently serving as secretary treasurer for Ores Mitchell Domestic Water and Sewer Association. I currently am full retired with my wife and we travel as often as we can. We have four children, Rory, Katie Jo, who is an educator, Ashley, and Jacob. The two boys are lieutenants for the Carlsbad Police Department. We are currently, I currently have seven grandkids and hopefully in future we'll grow some more with our youngest having children. We enjoy our grandkids and travel as often as we could, as we could. What I'm running for is for the purpose of full supervision of our superintendent. It is required by the board to supervise managers or directors and making sure that we are transparent and making sure that the job is being done as well as to be done and getting 100% of proper programs developed for not just our educators, but our students as well. Teachers are very important in how they function in the school district and we have to give them that 100% that they need in order for them to do their jobs properly. So Henry Castaneda, so my esposa es Kathy Castaneda, tengo cuatro chamacos, tengo siete hijos y hijas de nietos y les quiero dar las gracias por este carrera y poder correr para... Thank you, sir.
My name is Tiffany Shirley and I wasn't born or raised in Carlsbad, but I fell in love with this community about 23 years ago when I moved here. And it's where I chose to make my home, where I raise my children, my family, invest in businesses, and pour my life into nonprofit service as my career and also as a pastor. With that being said, to me, the most important thing that we do at our school board meetings is we pray before we get started. And so if you wouldn't mind, I would like to spend my minute to pray over tonight if you would stand with me. Father God, first of all, we just want to say thank you for loving us so much. Thank you for sending your son. Thank you for your love and grace and forgiveness. We ask that tonight you guide our hearts, our minds, and our mouths, that we all operate with integrity and truth tonight. And I thank you for every single person that steps on this stage tonight and for their desire to serve our community and that most of all, everything that we do glorifies you. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. So we have five additional... We have five questions for our four school board members in these contests. We will ask each school board member these five questions. They will have four far eight questions for each member. Then we'll have a candidate for a second level, if they would like. So the first question will go to Katie Gomez.
Katie, you're going to be saying that you're running against the status quo. How do you distinguish yourself from this system in terms of philosophy and approach? What is your understanding of the limitations of the school board?
To be honest, I, like I said initially, I'm not a good politician, to be 100% honest. Once I get a job, I grab the bull by the horns and I will run with that. But I will be 100% honest that I do not know everything about what is allowed, what isn't allowed, the same way I didn't as when I jumped into PTA. We know now that there are so many things that you're allowed to do and not allowed to do. And I also know that with that, that there are regulations within the school that are not correct for how they handle something like PTA. They're more constrictive and I feel like if that's the number one thing is to bring families and the community together, then those are some things that we should not be limiting. I feel like the transparency that is claimed is here's a $300, here's a 300-page document, go ahead and search for it. And I just feel like that can be a lot more easily accessible.
We will allow for a standing to vote for this single candidate. Your support?
Well, in all honesty, it does take a few years of doing the job to fully comprehend the heads and arms of it. I would argue that the transparency from my part is low for us currently as transparent as it's ever been. Prior to Tiffany and I and Trent being on the board four years ago, running for four years ago, there was no school board Facebook pages. There wasn't events shared, there wasn't community surveys, there wasn't community meetings pushed out publicly as it is now.
This next question will be for Henry Castaneda. Henry Castaneda, what lessons did you learn during your time serving in the county? Get elected, how was it implied those lessons, lessons serving on the school board? Do you believe your removal from your traditional position should be an issue or concern to voters?
It wasn't the removal, it was a retirement that I chose to take. I chose to resign my position. I had a hearing coming up and that was my decision to do that. It wasn't a removal. So at this time, to answer your question, the most important thing is what the administration is doing right now. The administration is really shooting in attendance. And during my time, 2012 through 14, we spent two years with truancy court and operated what was called truancy court. What we did there is anybody that was truant, we brought to the courtroom, not under judiciary rules. It was simply visit and making sure that the students were being honest and parents were being responsible for their students, their children coming to school. Truancy was at about a 58% graduation rate for seniors, not the current record of nine through 12. Thank you.
Sure. I will say that our current administration has made very large strides over the last few years to decrease truancy. There are many areas where we are a little bit handicapped by what we are allowed to do based on state regulations and when we have to refer those out. And unfortunately, there is not a lot of follow-through a lot of times after those are referred out to try to bring those kids back in. And so the school has hired, I believe it's seven truancy officers to work on attendance and they have been making huge strides in that area. Thank you.
This next question is for you, Tiffany. Parents, as soon as you have already got a talk, will the school leadership be more communicating? Parents are often more to check Facebook pages, the middle teachers, or find out what is etc. What can the school itself do better?
You know, that was exactly my concern as I came on four years ago. My first conversation with Dr. Washburn when I went in is the number one complaint I hear is that the district does not communicate enough and it is not transparent enough. And his response was, okay, help me with new and innovative ways that we can do that because my goal will be to make it that we over-communicate until the community says, you say too much. We are not there yet, but I do believe we are making progress. Parentsware that they're using now is an excellent tool that allows them to get messages out directly to parents. That's my first recommendation when I talk to parents, please make sure that you are on there. But I'm also more than happy to track down any information or to ensure anything I can do on my part to help get that communication to increase and to do it myself.
Yes, sir. I think that's, it's correct what Tiffany is saying, but the problem is, is that we have a large community that doesn't communicate socially on social media and it makes it difficult for them to communicate with teachers. And if that's the only way that they're capable of doing it, it hurts the people who are not educated, that are capable of communicating with teachers, find out what their students are. Plus, there is a huge language barrier with a lot of the Spanish-speaking people here in Carlsbad at this point.
Now, we move on to the... Okay, other word. I can't hear you.
All right, this question is from Mr. McMillan. In 2022, you led a network to address and you fought for the definition of critical race theory and our state proposed a study curriculum. Do you feel that your concerns are adequately addressed?
I do. I think within the brackets that the districts can work in with the state being the oversight on our curriculum, that it was resolved. We don't use, we use publishers that are recommended out of Texas and that gets us a little more away from that type of theory when we go with the Texas publisher, Texas recommended publishers. We also had a meeting where families, community meeting, families were able to come review the materials. I sat down with the curriculum team, I'm actually on the curriculum committee, and sat down with those teachers that have used the curriculum and went through it myself, looked at it myself. And I do, I think it was addressed, like I said, within what could be addressed as the state controls much of those decisions.
First, I would like to thank those efforts. That's wonderful. I also feel like there's not, I feel like we, kind of as they alluded to, that there is a better way, and I, and I am honest, I'm not going to say that I can tell you right now what that would be, but I do think through the surveys that we've done, finding out what people, what their preferred method is and not shoving it kind of down their throat, it would be kind of the best way. And what we've learned during the School of Excellence program at Ocatillo is that you might have to use every method.
All right, now, we're turning to Paige. We are going to ask this question by the way, just the whole of you. You're going to have the first question.
All right. Okay, this is all I can say. What is your understanding of the goals and responsibilities of being the school board member? What are the limitations of school board membership?
The school board is to represent the communities. To find out what the school board member is to represent the wishes of the people I represent and the decisions made that the district is vulnerable. I believe that's communication between those parties in the district. I think that's reflected in the policies we made when they have children and our staff. The only employee we are over is the superintendent. We're reminded of that continuously in all the school board trainings. That being said, we do get the bullpen, the ombud, for the things that happen when we vote him and we do that quite often during evaluations. We have those conversations with him where we think things are failing and things could be improved.
So, last question. Repeat the question. What is your understanding of the goals and responsibilities of being school board member? What are the limitations of school board membership?
I know there are a lot of limitations based on the state, New Mexico Public Education, the teachers union, things like that, that have a lot of things that when I started delving into this, that I did realize that there are those limitations and there are those things. But I really feel like with the community that we have, I feel like there are things that we could be creative with. And I feel like we are, I was really upset when I found out that Carlsbad is not an at-large school board. I feel like your voice is not just over those families that are in your district. I feel like the voice, you are one voice of five and it is your responsibility to try to help every child in the schools and not just one group.
Yeah, I don't even have to repeat what's been said because we do have limitations in what supervision under what we have over Washburn. And it's been a couple of years, two, three years, that I've yet to see any type of grading sequence on Mr. Washburn's responsibilities and his performance. So with that, it's important that we know that what our responsibilities are, one of those responsibilities are the administration is really pushing for is attendance.
Thank you. So in addition to what Ms. McMillan said, we are also in charge of policies for the district and as well as overseeing of the budget. And so those are kind of the basic line items of what the trainees tell you are in charge of. Where we go above that is I believe that we have a responsibility to the voters. I do believe that even though we are not an at-large district, which there are only a couple in New Mexico that are that way, we are representative of every part of our district. I don't ask for somebody where they live, when they call me with a concern, I'd say, let me know your concern and I will follow up on it. It doesn't matter where you live. And I believe that that is the responsibility of every other official. So we do have to be careful that we don't cross bounds that we are not allowed to cross, but we also want to go above and beyond every way that we can.
Next question will be from Katie Gomez. What can a school board member directly do to improve the Monti academic success of college students?
Like I said, we're one of five and so we don't have, no single person has a direct, we can't, it's not like a dictatorship where you can go in and say, this is my opinion and this is the way it is. And so I feel like, I feel as though, sorry. I feel as though there are a lot of things that can be done when you work together and you know the answers to questions before you vote to these meetings. I understand that there is sometimes where you ask a question just for transparency to show that you asked the question. But in my opinion, it would be a better way to say, you know, I had this question and I asked it ahead of time and now I know my answer. Because when you go in there and you have a unanimous vote, 90% of the time, I look back over times and I cannot find a split vote. And so I feel like everybody already knows what the plan is going to be going. And so I feel like if you're going to ask those questions, you should ask them.
Interviewing the same question, woman in response. What can a school board member directly do to improve Monti academic success of college students?
Management supervision of Mr. Washburn and the programs being presented to the school district. It's our responsibility to do so. It's like, our teachers currently have so much work that they have to do that they're given one curriculum over another. And then it comes a time with so many curriculums and so many job duties and performance evaluations and things that need to get done for their job to be completed for that day. We have a responsibility to making sure that the school district also assists the schools in evaluating the programs. It's like being on a bad medication. You're sick so many times, you go see the doctor, you're giving so many medications and then at this point, you have to be evaluated by the physician and drop all that's, all the required medications and now you've got one medication that's actually working. And that's what hasn't been done with our school system. That's what I'm pushing, what we can do. Thank you.
Yes. So for the previous school year, I sat on the strategic planning committee and we sat with teachers, administrators. I was only a board member on that committee, but, and we talked about with professionals that do this for a living, what we want the portrait of a graduate to look like, what we want our students to learn while they're in our schools. And then we backed that all the way down to the kindergarten preschool level of how we start implementing that. And once we've completed that new strategic plan, I requested that the annual review that we do with Dr. Washburn, which we do every year, it's just not public because you wouldn't want your personal review to be public either. But that is now aligned with that strategic plan. And so he is now graded on an annual basis on how well he is implementing that strategic plan. And he also gives us monthly updates on academic progress and that was requested by the board as well.
Thank you very much. Stay on.
I think one of the biggest struggles we face in this part of New Mexico is hiring teachers. And one of the ways we have worked to address that is through opportunity culture. There is not enough teachers coming out of college for like the ones that are going into retirement. So we have to come up with neat ways to fill that gap. And opportunity culture is going to help us fill that gap from within by training our, the ones we already have in the school system is becoming those teachers, coordinators that they have before them and are excellent teachers. Another thing that I think is important is post-COVID, we have a no zero grading policy. That was one of the things I pushed to get rid of immediately upon coming on board. And that was again, just a COVID response and that was something I didn't think was necessary post-COVID. We are seeing a lot of progress in our opportunity schools as far as testing and where they're improving. It's almost unbelievable. In fact, we're working with the state to get more money to cover that program.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next question for Mr. Castaneda. While the infrastructure improvements within the school district are commendable, some have expressed concern that our resources are not being devoted to recruiting and retaining qualified personnel. What is your understanding of the difference between funding streams related to employees and those related to capital projects?
I mean, I know there's line items for each one of them and they have to be focused on, the funds have to go to those line items for teachers and curriculum and everything has a separate line item. But what our responsibility is, is to making sure that Washburn is following those rules and making sure that he steps aside from the infrastructure and saying, my responsibility is also the teachers in this district. It is also the students of this district. I understand he wants to rebuild. I understand we have some old buildings, but his focus on the current infrastructure has, I think, has been misled by him to the public. And he needs to step back and look at everything that's going on with our school district and focus on our students and our teachers and their performance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. Does he all know you are allowed to read this question from the audience that's here? If you got a question for a member over a school board or city council, page your name, file, ask them to bring over pin and build a backboard.
Thank you. So that was one of the things that I did not understand before coming on to the board and really diving into the budget and the fact that the revenues that we have from property taxes, oil and gas taxes, things like that around our community are incredible at this point and those funds cannot be used for staff. I am all for paying our teachers more, for putting more money into the classroom. I think that we have to be creative in how we do that, but that can't come from those funds. The reason that we are so flush with CAS right now is because in 2022, there was a legislation change that meant that instead of 75% of those taxes going to the state and the state deciding what they want to do with that and us only keeping 25%, we now get to keep 100% of that. And so in 2022, we ended up with a huge surplus and money that we could invest into that. Investing into our facilities not only provides a better learning environment for our students, but it dramatically helps us recruit teachers when they come and they see new state-of-the-art facilities. And so it helps all around. I do believe it's balanced. Thank you.
This is the last question. My main goal is to fund projects and that's what we've done. And we are in a really unique place with our oil and gas, so we have to be able to get better kids in the community of a brand new facility, a brand new update facility. As far as attracting teachers to the area, we have multiple teacher houses, cafes, and have purchased more since I've been on the board. We've purchased an apartment complex. Prior to this year, we were the highest paid district in the state. Roswell now has a need because they took ten extra days and the money they're paying with that. We did higher incentives with moving bonuses trying to attract teachers from campus state. So there are opportunities to get those teachers here and like I said, it's just, it's a matter of finding those people because they're not coming out of college as they were 15, 20 years ago. So we're having to either do alternative licensing or teachers that decided teaching is actually their dream.
I used to sit on a committee that was the Carlsbad Committee for Kids when the Bond Projects first started ramping up. And I, we, I have a video of my daughter that says, vote yes for my future. And the second time we sat on that committee, there are people that are in this room that I walked outside with that same day and said, you know what, I don't know if we should be doing this anymore. And that's when I kind of realized that the Carlsbad school system is being run as a business. I was given more evidence to that recently when I decided to start running for school board, I started looking into things that I could do, whether I won or lost, because I knew that I still needed to try to make a difference either way. And I looked into a company in Roswell that rebuilds homes and brings them down. And she said, you know, that's crazy that you call because I've already talked to the schools and I just don't understand why that information isn't being public. I don't know if they jumped the gun and that's why it's not being public. I haven't gotten to the bottom of that portion yet. But I also have done survey and have realized that a lot of people talk about their club culture.
Okay, next question. We'll start with a picture. Many articles address the issue of COVID cough. Planning that students and teachers have never recovered from COVID, not companion shutdown, both actively leading to term of overall museum. Your opinion, is the COVID cough still an issue? And so, what have we uncovered?
I don't believe that we will know the full impact of COVID for even years to come. You know, we have kids right now that are... You know, we have kids right now that are starting school or in early elementary that were in the middle of COVID in their very formative years when they were learning to speak and walk and do all these things. I believe it is very real. I don't believe that it is a crutch or an excuse that we can use to just say, well, we can't do anything about it. It means that we have to work harder and we have to make up for lost ground. The question is, how do we do that? And I don't pretend to have all those answers, but I know the answer is not to just make an excuse and pass them on to the next teacher. We have to figure out how we can support our teachers in supporting our kids to make sure that we can get them to where they need to be so that they can have successful futures and not have this hang over them for the rest of their lives.
Thank you very much. This is a note. Same question. How do we solve COVID?
I do think we still have, we are still taking the effects of that. We have a whole chunk of kids who missed that in-person instruction when they needed that combination role and they're paying for it. And unfortunately, we don't have the capacity to hold back entire classes of kids. And so we've had, we've been forced to move those forward. I don't think we can always use COVID as an excuse for why we're not there, but we are seeing this new for the kids that go in kindergarten through the third grade that they are not showing the same level of learning losses the ones that were in kindergarten. Wouldn't be more than enough. The best way I think we can work towards addressing that loss is through opportunity culture. Like I said, the testing data that we're seeing out of those schools is impressive. And I think that's how we fix the gap for those kids.
Thank you very much.
With the COVID experience, I have a unique perspective on that because my child, my oldest was in kindergarten when COVID happened. She did not get to finish her kindergarten year. My second started kindergarten online and so I got to see the, what it caused for them. But I also have two younger children who are in school now. And my first grader, he has a class of kids that struggled with dangers because they did not realize that that was not normal. My older two knew that spending time at home and making debt tax at home while we were supposed to be on quarantine, that that was not normal. And so they realized that there was a different aspect to life. My six-year-old, he struggles. His class struggles. His teacher talks to me about the struggles that they face with those children. And one of the things that I could not believe was that they have now reduced him to one recess per day. Those, they, at first grade, they reduced to one recess per day. And so I feel like there's got to be something we can do. Thank you very much.
Yes, I think that needs to be further looked at and investigated. It's hard to tell at this time whether it is or not. When you look at the grading programs are currently on is math, science, arts, social studies and mathematics. And currently from the state of New Mexico's grading period, they're about the 66, 60 percentile. And I'm just focused on nine through 12. Carlsbad High School's grading at this point at about a 78% increase in how their performance in those levels are. So it's hard to tell if you're getting those type of grade levels and whether the COVID funk is still in traumatizing our children. But I can tell you with the law that's being passed by the House and Senate, that health-wise, that they're going to require all students and teachers to be vaccinated under their requirements with the Department of Health is going to hurt.
This question here is directed at this woman. What can be done during this meeting and smoking in middle school and high school?
We do have faith alarms. Unfortunately, those get vaporized quite often. I would like to see our discipline policy on that to strengthen that those kids sometimes get more opportunities than I think they deserve. I think if something like that, I think the house is supposed to be stronger. Other than that, I think it's an effort with the parents and making them aware of what the dangers are and whether your student has one or not. Took me does a lot of work with her foundation on addressing those needing parents aware of that information so that they can watch for their own kids and just sharing the information on the dangers of that.
I feel like it truly is an issue that needs to be addressed. I have been told by my daughter who's in sixth grade, some of her friends, some of my employees' kids, that they are scared to go to the bathroom during school because they are scared to what they will encounter, whether it be fights or vaping or anything like that. I have a child who has sent his mom multiple videos of kids vaping in the bathroom. He's sent them multiple videos of fighting that's happening inside the building in the hallways where there's thirty kids standing in a circle. And I know that that's a real challenge, but I feel like there's some things that we, that we need to do as far as fostering programs starting. It may take a generation to fix, which we don't have in the four years that we're here. But I feel like there are boots on the ground and that's kind of one of the things that I run my campaign on is that being there and being present and knowing that those kids are scared to go to the bathroom. They won't go to the bathroom unless they have PE and it just breaks my heart.
There's no doubt that we have to hold our kids responsible for their actions. And I don't think that we're getting that done administratively. Our educators are doing as best they can at the elementary schools as well as the junior high, sixth grade academy and the high school. And it's unfortunate that we don't, we're not holding these kids responsible for their actions. And that's what needs to be done. We need to have our administration with better result, I mean, better procedures and policies implemented so that kids will stop doing what they're doing in vaping. I understand there was just a kid just vaped in classroom just the other day and didn't think twice about doing it and got it done. And there was no consequences. He was right back in class. They took the vape away and he's still vaping.
So this is something that I'm especially passionate about. This is what I do for a career. I work for the Anti-Drug and Gang Coalition. And I spend a lot of my life talking to kids about the dangers of drug abuse and things like this. And we're seeing that we have to do it younger and younger. And I know it is a massive problem and I don't want to downplay that because it is. But there are still a higher percentage of students that are not vaping, that are not doing drugs and alcohol than there are kids that are doing it. We do anonymous surveys every year where the kids report what's going on. And so I'm not saying that it's not a problem and we have to be stern. There are some limitations on what we are allowed to do. Unfortunately, as we've talked about a lot tonight, not all of those disciplinary decisions are made locally. But there are changes that can be made to better support that and to better educate our students unfortunately at younger and younger ages because we need them to learn the truth before they learn lies from their friends and community members. And so I'm just in two weeks going to speak to fifth graders about this.
All right, well, we have time for one audience question before we go to the closing statements. This question will start with Katie Goins. Which of the state mandates regulations do you distribute or have a problem with will you fight to treat?
To be a hundred percent honest, I don't know all the state mandates, so I don't know which one I would have the biggest issue with. I do know that, that I will spend time fighting for the things that I feel like our staff needs, our students need, our community needs. And whether, whether it be with New Mexico Public Education, whether it be on the governor's level, I don't feel like this is a rubber stamp position. I don't feel like this is something where you, you agree with things that are already, already decided. And I just feel like I would, I would dive in and I would learn as much as I can the same way that I've done with every other job I've owned.
Thank you very much.
Vaccinations that are required and going to be implemented to our students and our instructors, not just for schools, but for childcare as well. That's a mandate that's going to, that we're going to be responsible for. We are responsible for right now. And they're, they're really fighting to prevent that parents have the right to claim the exemptions of religion. And if it's not, the way it reads, it appears that that's not going to be an option if we don't fight it. And I spent plenty of time with legislators to make some changes for the betterment of the judiciary. And I plan on doing the same because this is going to be a real battle for this community, not just for the, for teachers, but it's also going to be for our students and the parents not being able to invoke our religious convictions.
Yes, thank you. There are so many. But the first one that comes to my mind is the fact that we don't have much control on what our school day looks like. Used to, things like recess counted as part of our educational time. And I believe that that is valuable educational time. It no longer counts as part of your school day. The time that they spend eating lunch, eating breakfast, going between classes doesn't count as part of our school day. And so when you hear things about having to extend the school day or we're trying so hard not to add days because teachers don't want to work more days and parents want their kids home in the summer and so many different things. But they keep taking away things that qualify as educational time. When our boots on the ground, our teachers that are there, they're the ones that know the most valuable thing to do with those students. They know how they learn best. We need to be able to listen to those and do what's best for our local kids. Unfortunately, that is not the world we currently live in, but that doesn't mean we stop fighting for it.
The biggest shock since being on the board is realizing how much control the state has in our day-to-day operations. They, in every year that I've been on the board, that control is getting deeper and deeper down to where they are controlling every minute of our day. Where passing periods counted towards our school day, we can't count those anymore. I do think the calendar and how our days are counted isn't a fourth one that we can push back on. I do think that the vaccine mandate that Mr. Estenada mentioned is another one we need to watch. I am very against the state having as much control as they do. I think more local control is better. We can serve our community the way they need to be served. And I will never stand for parents' rights being taken away to make decisions for their kids, whether that's vaccines, whether that's things they're learning in the classroom, whatever. Maybe the parent is the ultimate authority of those children and I will do whatever I can to afford to support them.
Thank you very much. Go around the board. We'll be closing statements for them. So this is board today. We're going to start with but you know what, I see that's off statement until your day.
Okay, first off, I'd like to say that there's a lot of things that I feel strongly about that we didn't get to tonight. And so I'm welcoming anybody that would like to speak about those to contact me, be on my website, be on my Facebook page, people like that. But the closing statement that I have prepared here is that my journey is not a political one. It's personal. As a mom, a small business owner and as an active community volunteer, I've seen what happens when decisions are made without real input from the people that those decisions affect. I understand that some of those things are not in our control. But I also would like to dive into whether as a member of the board or just as a private citizen, what can be done to remedy some of that stuff? I have worked to bridge the gap through programs and bring families and educators together and by building partnerships that create lasting impact for kids in our community. Before opening the Studies at Academy, I worked as a medical assistant and educator. And later as a procurement manager for Eddy County where I learned the importance of fairness, transparency and accountability when managing public funds. Those experiences taught me how to ask questions, look for solutions and make responsible decisions to benefit everyone, not just you. The, that's the kind of leadership I want to bring to our schools. A board should never just exist to approve what's already been decided. If nearly every vote is unanimous, we have to ask, is that truly what's best? Or is there another route for it? I'm not here to rubber stamp or to be a name on a letterhead and not saying that that's what is currently happening because I will never attack anybody for doing their best. But I'm here to represent voices that have been explained to me that they don't feel like they've been hurt to bring transparency to the process and to ensure that every decision is made to put kids first. I'm Katie Gomez and I'd be honored for your vote for Carlsbad District. Thank you.
My hearing on school board, so start with a theory. We're on with the train of the right and half of my morning point is thinking of change and how the board operates and listening to parents. I've done a really good job of that. I have been transparent. I have served with integrity. I have stood on things even when I was the only one standing if I had seen. I have not rubber stamped anything. I have thought through. I will research. I will definitely answer. I will find answers. I have established myself as a worthy board member in the last three or four years. And I think I have created a lot of really good relationships with people across the district, with legislators while I've been in this spot. And I'm willing to continue working on behalf of Carlsbad. I've never asked a single person when involved with something what district they live in. I operate for the entire community, homeschool, public and private school alike because they're all kids in the community. They all participate in the community and they all deserve the same level of representation at the school level. And I will continue to provide that if you don't contribute anything. Thank you.
Thank you. So four years ago, I was at my house and I was praying for these positions to be filled. And as I was praying for godly leaders to be raised up that would stand for integrity and truth, I heard very clearly, sometimes it's your time to pray for those leaders and sometimes it's time to step up and be that leader. I never planned to be in politics either, but I care about this community. I care about our children and their futures and it's worth it. For the last four years, I have endeavored to live out those things, to serve with truth and integrity and transparency. It was important to me as I learned the process behind everything that I shared that with our community because I feel like there was a lot of people out there that were like me that wanted to know more and they just didn't know where to find it. Never before have issues like annual calendars and school designs and so many other projects been so readily available and in your newsfeed where you already are. Because I'm not about checking a box that we did our due diligence to post a meeting on the back page of a website or in the corner of a paper. I want involvement. I want our community to be able to speak up and be involved. I have heard for years that the district was not transparent enough and so that has been my major focus over the last four years. We're not there yet and we have a lot of work left to do, but we're making progress. Another critical goal of mine over the last four years has been to protect our precious children, both physically and mentally. We have expanded security positions on every campus, partnered with CPD to obtain grants for additional SRO positions and design new spaces with premium safety measures in mind. I've also been working with administration to ensure our students are protected from inappropriate library materials that are being pushed all around our state. Many of the officials in Santa Fe don't share our local morals, but it's our job to fight for those, both at the state level and at the local level. I truly hope that my efforts over the last four years to serve with truth and integrity and transparency have been obvious and that I get the opportunity to do it again. Thank you.
Required supervision. It's something that, it's important in my eyes to being married to an educator and now a father to an educator, along with many family and friends that are educators and have retired or are still in work and to support our local teachers. It's important that they, they have someone to go to so that they can get that support. It's not just about doing their job and getting their code, their numbers in. And it's important for us to making sure that we have, we're that voice for them. We're that voice for the community. It's required. It helps them to know that they are supported by us and not just doing what we feel is best because they bring us information that it's the best. It's our responsibility to look at what's best and try to implement those requirements so that our state, our leaders can, can continue to come down to Carlsbad and see how our performance is and see what our students are doing. But we cannot turn a deaf ear on our teachers as well as our students. And I don't take that lightly. The compulsory school attendance law definitely needs to play a part in this whole development. And I'll make sure that we get that done and I implement compulsory school attendance law as a board member to make a difference for our teachers and our students. We have five requirements of our students and teaching them five different basic deals is report to school, have a dress code, have a language code, you have to perform a grade and then you leave for the end of the day. Those five virtues help us hold down a job and that's all we need to look for.
Thank you all for the work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen, we did hear from District 11 and District 3. We are going to give an opportunity to District 5 candidate who is running uncontested, Jesus Piero. Only in three minutes to introduce himself and then to ask him.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. Hello, my name is Jesus Piero. I'm writing out a post for District 5 of the school board. Just to give you a little background about myself, I was born and raised here in Carlsbad. Been here my whole life, married to my wonderful wife, Katrina. She's a school IA teacher. And I have two kids. Currently, they're attending Ocatillo. One's in fourth grade and one's in first grade. So I've lived my whole life here. I graduated in 2002 from Carlsbad High School, went on to postgraduate education, went to New Mexico State, obtained a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. Since then, I've gone on and obtained my professional engineering degree. Currently, I'm a licensed contractor. I have a lot of experience in building and destruction. I've been in the construction industry for 25 years, currently working for a local contractor, a constructor. It's been a long time, a lot of my time doing that. You know, as a professional engineer, I've committed to serving the public and looking out for the best interest of the public and public safety. I've been inspired through my kids, watching them grow up and them participating in activities, sports, stuff like that. And I find it very valuable to establish a foundation for them. I see the value of sports and education bring. And I just think it's important now with our youth that we get them started early, not only through church, through school. I just find it important. So that's pretty much what I got to say. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next, we do have our rest in NC for the trustees, a member that is running uncontested as well, Ned Offage. Ned, I'm going to give you three minutes. Please stay out of those three minutes.
I can't say my name. Hey, so I've, you know, I've been at this for four years. The doors here have decided to get out of New Mexico State. It was a huge, huge decision for the community, for this little school. And it took, you know, a lot of people fighting. This community worked so hard, so hard to make this happen. And we're proud of what we've accomplished in four years. This school has never done that. I love being a part of it. I'm proud to be a part of it for six more years. I'll be probably in a wheelchair by the time this thing is over. But it's a passion of mine. We love what we're doing. This term, I ran originally on vocational training. We have a great school, but we're not doing enough vocational training. We're not doing enough to get people ready for a job in this community. So we just broke the ground. We're about to start another day for a huge vocational training facility. Looking forward to seeing that built over the next couple of years. Thank you all for your confidence in what we're doing.
And do you have a celebrity wife here? This is me. All right, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break and then we will begin our city council floor.
You're listening to Community Forum on KCCC 930 AM, sponsored by Eddy County, honoring God, country, and family, thriving with industry since 1889.